Are we, Brian, are we good back there with the audio and video? Okay, I don't have any monitor up here. I don't know if I've done something wrong and... Okay, so I would like to... Ah, there we go. Thank you. I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to the March 4th meeting of the Temple Terrace City Council. Welcome to all of our guests. Good to see everybody. Where are we here? Please, I'd like to remind everybody to please silence your electronic devices. And I'm just taking a little poll here of who that guy's gonna be tonight, whose phone's gonna ring, right? Probably one of us. So if you would, please stand and join me in the invocation and the pledge. Lord, we pray tonight for peace, both within our own country and throughout the world. We pray for our Muslim neighbors during this holy season of Ramadan. May peace be upon them. We pray for those who are less fortunate than us, both at home and throughout the world, and may we never forget our duty to help others. We ask for wisdom and compassion tonight as we engage in the noble, but sometimes difficult, task of self-governance. Help us to remember that despite our flaws and differences, our nation is still the greatest republic the world has ever produced. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, justice for all. Thank you. So for those of you who don't visit us very often, we have a tradition in the city of Temple Terrace now that we begin each meeting with a fun or interesting fact about the city of Temple Terrace or the region that we're in. And tonight, that duty falls on Councilmember Fernandez.
Good evening, everyone. Temple Terrace has been a unique place to live, depending on when you were here. So if you were here in the 1920s, it was a very popular social destination. Our country club had the beautiful hotels, which is now Sutton Hall, but people came from all over the north to enjoy the winters in Florida and hunt and golf and do all kinds of things. And then, things slowed down. But, it still was a beautiful place to live. Not as many celebrities around. And then, in 1972, October 1972 is when this article is from, but the golf tournament was actually November 26th, 27th, 1972, at our country club. And then, the celebrities were back. So this is the time for the first annual Johnny Bench Invitational. And some of the celebrity players were Charlie Pride, Buck Owens, Lloyd Nolan, Tom Harmon, TV personality George Lindsay, which his, he was better known as Goober, but you had to watch the television show to know that. So Johnny Bench was the Cincinnati Reds catcher, and he was putting on this tournament that was actually sponsored by the Tampa J.C.'s. And gold, silver, and bronze sponsorships were available, and tickets were on sale at Area Sears, Montgomery Ward, and Moss Brothers stores, as well as local pro shops. So that tournament was the first annual Johnny Bench celebrity tournament. And I don't know how many there were after it, but we do have, thanks to a generous donation from one of our area citizens, a, we have the program, a program from this time period. And it, you might not be able to pick it up on the camera, but it is actually autographed by Johnny Bench. So the celebrities were back in Temple Terrace to put on a golf tournament, and it was a, I don't know exactly how much it cost. It was, obviously, a fundraiser tournament. I'm gonna see if I can get the program out, so I can get a little more. So it's got, it's a very interesting program. So it's got all the typical things the program will have for the important stores and information. And of course, nope, Glenn Campbell was there. Okay? So I do happen to know that we moved to Temple Terrace in February of 1972, and my mother participated in this golf tournament, driving a golf cart, and she met Glenn Campbell. I don't, I've heard he was very dreamy. So there's, so you've got all kinds of, you've got background on the Temple Terrace Country Club, and the golf course, which those of you realize that the community was built around the golf course, and it has been a central part of this community from its inception. And then, you can see that that continued on. Now, I don't know how long this golf tournament went on, but I do know that it was exciting for the people who live here. And we're thankful, we're grateful that we have this to hopefully display at some point. And I wanted to segue into the fact that, right now, this and other Temple Terrace memorabilia are housed in various locations. A lot of it is in private ownership, in people's houses, and some of it is stored in the library in a cabinet. And this would be a really good time, as we're fast approaching our 100-year anniversary, to think about re-energizing the Temple Terrace Preservation Society, which has existed in the past, but is not active right now. And hopefully, as we're getting into this anniversary, we can get citizens to be very interested in getting the Preservation Society energized, and helping the city find a place where we can properly keep and store our memorabilia, as well as display them for citizens to be able to see the great history of what is a little town. Because, you know, you think, I grew up here from '72, and obviously, for a while, and went away to college and came back. But, you know, we, at some point, became known as a bedroom community for Tampa, and people just, they lived here, but they worked in the city of Tampa prevalently. And it's very nice that, if we could have a place that helps display and help keep alive the history and remind people that the city has been a very key component to the social life and the development of this area. So that is my historic fact.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yeah! Good, thank you. Thank you very much. So first item is, we have a proclamation for Bike Month, and I'd like to invite Julie Bond to approach the podium. Mrs. Bond is a senior research associate with the Center for Urban Transportation Research, which we normally just call Cutter, that's over on USF's campus. And so, Mrs. Bond is a valuable community partner of ours, as is Cutter, and helps make a lot of our events possible, so thank you. And we are here to proclaim Bike Month. And so, for more than a century, the bicycle has been a utilitarian, economical, environmentally sound, and effective means of personal transportation, recreation, and fitness. The city of Temple Terrace encourages the use of bicycles as a means of transportation and recognizes bicycles as a legitimate user, as legitimate roadway users. The city of Temple Terrace promotes safe and responsible bicycling and is committed to incorporating the development of bicycle facilities in the vision for revitalizing our city. And so, thank you for being with us, Mrs. Bond. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Ross and City Council. It's an honor to be here and accept the proclamation. And this is the, I want to mention, this is the 11th year of the mayor's bike ride, which is on Friday. I've been here for every single one of them, and I remember when we first started the bike rides, everyone was very excited, and I think it's been great to see many of you every year there. And so, again, I hope you will all join us. It's a great way for the mayor to show his support of bicycling in Temple Terrace. We have many people who bicycle to get around, and so, I hope that all of you will support even safer routes, and just continue the great work with bicycling. So thank you very much. I'm honored to be here.
Thank you, Mrs. Bond. All right. Make sure I pick up the right one.
And also, Brenton with Cutter is here. And he is going to show everyone, so I'm inviting everyone here, the bicycle shirt that is commemorating the 100 years. And so, everyone who shows up on Friday at 7:30 to bike will receive a T-shirt, and then it's a very leisurely, do you say 3.9-ish?
Oh, I didn't even think of that.
2.9, is it 2.9? Yeah, 2.9, sorry, I didn't mean to add that mile on. We have a detour this year, though.
We do, we have some utility work going on, yeah.
Yes. And so, a very leisurely, and so we invite everyone to come out, and we have some refreshments and safety items, so we'd love to see everybody out and biking in the community.
Thank you.
And that's for you, Mayor.
Thank you. Good color this year.
It is, I know. I think the design's really nice.
I think you're good. Yep, I got this down.
All right, three, two, one. Thank you.
Thanks for being here, appreciate it. Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Next, I am honored to invite Sister Magda Alkada Alkadi Salah to the podium. And I'm sure I said that wrong.
You're close enough.
So I want to introduce Sister to everybody. For those of you who may not have had an opportunity to meet her, she is really an esteemed leader in the Muslim community here in Temple Terrace, and also within the city of Temple Terrace. And so, we're very honored to have her. She's a very accomplished woman, I could read along bio here, but just some highlights, is she has been the leader of both the Universal Academy of Florida and the American Youth Academy in Tampa, for each, for over 11 years at each school. She guided both schools through the accreditation process and secured IB status for the American Youth Academy. She currently heads Bayan Academy, which is an excellent school here in the city, and she's president of Radiant Hands since 2014. Radiant Hands is an organization that supports women, refugees, families, to get established and to make a living and obtain homes and housing, and just get their feet under them. And so, really, very interesting person, and we're very honored to have you here. And I'd like you, and she's here, to receive a proclamation in recognition of the holy season of Ramadan. And so, the proclamation reads, "Whereas freedom of religion holds the distinction as a cherished right and a foundational value upon which the laws and ethics of the United States are based, and enriched by the unparalleled diversity of its residents, the city of Temple Terrace takes great pride in supporting individuals who express their religious freedom in varied cultural traditions. Islam is the second-largest religion in the world, and there are millions of Muslim-Americans, both immigrants and native-born, of diverse backgrounds and beliefs. Temple Terrace, as most of us know, is home to a large Muslim community, many of whom are with us tonight. The followers of the Islamic faith, Ramadan, for the followers of the Islamic faith, Ramadan is the holiest month of the Islamic calendar. It's regarded as a time for spiritual reflection, solidarity with the less fortunate, and the bridging of differences between people over a shared commitment to faith. Now therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, encourage the community to reflect on the history and contributions of Muslims in Temple Terrace through the celebration of Ramadan and Muslim Heritage Month." And so, Sister, would you please say a few words?
You know, there's so much to say about the city of Temple Terrace. I've been here as a resident, and it's my place of work, for over 30 years. The city of Temple Terrace has always been very welcoming to us as a community, and to schools in general. My background is mainly education, and the city of Temple Terrace, I think, has reached out to all the schools for all the years I've been here, from the beginning of the year with a new teacher breakfast, to the end of the year for outstanding student awards. And we've always tried to teach our students that, our school's an Islamic school, and we always try to teach them that we look for the similarities we have in our religions instead of the differences. One of our teachers is Catholic, and she'll be talking to them tomorrow about Ash Wednesday and the start of Lent. And she actually started her fast on Saturday, when we started our fast. She started a little bit early, in solidarity with the students. So the Muslim Heritage Month proclamation is appreciated by everybody in Temple Terrace, I think Muslim and non-Muslim alike. And it gives our children some recognition of who they are, and when our students see themselves recognized, they become more active in their own communities, and they become positive citizens, hopefully, in this community and throughout this beautiful country. So I thank you, we're honored to accept the proclamation, and we look forward to a partnership. It was very nice watching the video you had on at the beginning. Amina Khan, one of our Muslim members of the community, she was American, Canadian, Indian, very ethnically diverse, and she, I think she's been given all six murals for the, for the city of Temple Terrace. So it's nice, it was nice seeing that when we came in, and we hope we have a long partnership that's successful for all of us.
Thank you very much. Let's give her a round of applause.
Thank you.
You guys want to come up?
Yes, please.
Come on.
Yeah.
Call it.
Hi, how you doing?
The camera can't see you, right?
No, that's true. There's enough people.
Now, the video can see us.
Yes, not me, I'm good.
All right. We'll get somebody to take one. All right.
Can you try scooting it a little bit closer? All right, perfect. Okay, three, two, one.
Mary, can you take one with Samir's phone?
Of course.
Oh, we're gonna hit one from Maria.
Well, no, it's her phone, but yes.
All right, three, two, one, three, two, one.
Oh, yes, sir.
30-second announcement.
Yes.
In commemoration of, and the starting of the Heritage Month for Muslims, we have brought some gifts to everybody of the audience here, to get them to taste how Muslims break their fast. So the breaking of the fast is traditional, and we just brought some gifts for them. Please, Allah has to do that.
Very good, thank you. Thank you very much. And there's no eating in the council chambers, right? We have carpeting here, so, all right. Thank you, folks, for coming. So, has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from our meeting on February the 18th? And if so, is there a motion?
To approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No nays, minutes are adopted. Next is persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. We...
Mr. Loeb, I have your request.
We'll just give it a minute, just give it a minute. Thank you, good night.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, for those persons wishing to address the council on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda, there are forms in the back of the room. We do ask that speakers come to the podium and begin with their name and city of residence, and we have a three-minute time limit imposed on all speakers. So I currently have one request to speak for Mr. Loeb. Mr. Loeb, you are up.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, just to interrupt, but just in reference to consent agenda, if anyone's speaking to it, that the items have been...
Yeah, the consent, yeah, but I, it's, yeah, I was gonna, yeah, thank you. Mr. Loeb?
All set.
All set. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Charles Love from Terrace Park, and I went down yesterday to the hardboard meeting wearing this shirt, and it got the attention of Councilman Louis Fiera of Tampa, and I reminded him about the birthday party coming up on May 3rd, so I did want to mention that. I went down there to talk about some other things, and a couple of them had to do with Temple Terrace. Other things can wait, but the one thing I did want to point out to remind you all, if you all want to do this, is to try to get, to try to either go with Sunshine or Heart Plus, if you do want to help the residents who are shut-ins to come to your party on May 3rd. I don't know how progress that is going, but I hope, I hope something can be arranged for them. Another thing is that you saw that, the Muslim folks, that Muslim lady, I also saw the woman who was doing the painting over Lightfoot, and I told her, I came up with an idea that she liked a lot, and that is toward putting some sort of illumination so that the paintings can be seen at night, especially over on 56th Street and White Way over by, over by the Lightfoot Center. But it was nice to meet her and all that. She just seems like, like this lady here, that just came over, very, very nice lady. Finally, I did want to mention something about the library, mainly about the library book sale. That's coming up yet again, and last time, even with a relatively limited stock of books, relative to what I've usually seen there, there was $1,243 made officially on the sale. The library sale is coming up on Thursday, March 20th, and through Saturday, March 22nd. I hope we can get people over there and all that, and have a good turnout again, and hopefully, there'll be a little few more books this time, and I guess, anything else? Yeah, that's about it for me tonight. And I am glad, by the way, obviously, about the program that was found, and thank you for the minutes on from that time.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Are there other members of the public who wish to speak? Seeing none? Okay, we have one public hearing tonight. No, first of all, let me, the consent agenda, all three items on the consent agenda are being pulled and postponed because some of the specifications on the purchases have changed at the last minute, so we will see these items back before us at, I would assume, the next meeting. But the specification changes came in at a very late hour, and there was inadequate time to change them, so we will have no consent agenda tonight. We have one public hearing, and it is the first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance adopting a comprehensive plan, future land use map amendment for 10851 Rollerson Ranch Road, and I will open the public hearing, and our city planner, Miranda Anaya, is here to explain. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, City Council.
Tonight is the first reading and first public hearing of a comprehensive plan amendment, The property is currently vacant, located near the corner of I-75 and Fowler Avenue. It is accessed by Rollerson Ranch Road, which is a local roadway. Council, as you are aware, the city and the property owner executed a purchase and sales agreement that was recently amended in October. For a brief recap, these were the two conceptual plans as part of that agreement for apartments. The difference between the two was the proposed location of the gatehouse, and recently, the applicant has informed us that they would be proceeding with option A due to discussions with FDOT, denying their request. Here was the conceptual rendering as submitted with the agreement. For this application, the applicant is requesting to amend the future land use district from public semi-public to residential 18. Residential 18 is generally for multifamily use. This will allow the applicant to be able to build up to 18 units per acre. Changing the future land use from public semi-public to residential 18 will allow for the number of units as presented in the conceptual plan. For this 20-acre site, the maximum allowed density is 360 units, which is also the number that the applicant has requested. The planning commission adopted a resolution for this project as well, and finds the requested map amendment consistent with the Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan, and they will give a short presentation at the next hearing. Staff recommends approval of CPA 2402 on first reading and public hearing, and to schedule the second reading and public hearing for March 18th. That is all. Thank you, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Anaya. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, I see the owners' representatives are here, or would you like to add anything to it? It's voluntary, you can, or you don't have to?
Just here to answer any question you might have.
Very well, thank you. Okay, councilmembers, questions for staff or for the owners' representatives?
I have a question.
Councilmember Fernandez?
So can you put option A, so I know we discussed a lot about FDOT possibly vacating the road, it doesn't connect to anything, correct?
Yeah, it dead-ends at their property, so the difference between option A and option B... I don't know if I can... I don't think I can. But if you look at the gatehouses between, you can see that the gatehouse was gonna be closer to the road and on option B as opposed to option A.
Right, so the, this road, which is the access road that goes in front of it, it's the way you would, it's the only way you could access the property, correct? And so that road, as it comes around and curves to the top right, it just, that's just a dead end, correct? It doesn't connect to anything?
Yeah.
Okay. So where does the, how, just for people that are not necessarily familiar with this location, how would you get onto this access road to get access to the property? From, where does it come in from?
Yeah, the road you're referencing is Rollerson Ranch Road?
I'm sorry, just to preserve the record, can you state your name?
Yes, sir, sorry, Brian Smith. And so he acts it from a traffic signal at the corner of three-oh-one and Rollerson Ranch Road, and headed north on Rollerson Ranch Road, and it does dead end into the property.
So it, to go forward with this project, you're not asking for any other changes to... I mean, I understand why, why you requested potentially that the FDOT vacate that property. Doesn't, it doesn't go anywhere, and it's not going to connect to something. But you're not asking for any other changes in roads or traffic pattern? You're, you're just building on property that's already accessible to... And the reason I'm asking, I just wanna, because of some of the public comments that I was just looking at, that were attached in our, our documents that are concerned about extending the street to Fowler Avenue, but it's never going to extend. It's, you're, you're not making any changes.
Correct, that's correct. It will dead end to the property and won't connect to Fowler.
So, and it, and, and, but also, just to clarify, even if FDOT had vacated that property, there was never an intention to connect to Fowler?
That's correct.
Thank you, that's it.
Other questions? Councilmember Kravitz.
Mostly to staff, though.
Oh, well, you don't have any?
No, not, not to Mr. Smith.
You don't have any questions, or you do?
I do, but for staff.
Oh, okay, okay.
I, just to refresh my memory, I know we always hear this, it is in alignment with the comprehensive plan. I was just curious, could you refresh my memory? What part of the comprehensive plan is this fulfilling?
So when you're looking at a consistency with comprehensive plan, one, the Planning Commission reviews this application. They found it consistent. But as far as staff reviewing the comprehensive plan, we do, do look at adjacent properties to see if they also have similar or compatible land uses. Because this is east of seventy-five, we don't really have a comparable for that. So that is one analysis that we look at. We also look at the, some of the policies and goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. We also listed some, and the Planning Commission in the backup material also has some additional policies.
And, okay, the specific ones aren't available?
I did have a few. There was one about specifically, 'cause, 'cause the project is aligning with the affordable housing. There is one that I listed in the comprehensive plan, but I believe the Planning Commission had about at least ten in their staff report.
So the Planning, it sounds like the Planning Commission was the, the lead on this, then?
They, they will always be the lead for the comprehensive plan amendments.
Okay. And I just have one more question, if that's all right. The, the traffic situation on Rollerson Road during the course of this, which I know extends further back to before I was elected, has there been any effort to do traffic calming measures along that street to benefit the existing residents who are in that area?
Not that I'm aware of. I did, in the backup material for the Planning Commission, they also reached out to the Community and Infrastructure Department, and they said they don't have any plans to extend the road or do any traffic calming devices or anything like that.
And this is, this is kind of an island of Temple Terrace out there, as far as I'm aware? So most of Rollerson Ranch Road is not under our...
Exactly, it's not under our jurisdiction for the road.
Thank you.
Other questions? I, I have a couple. Ms. Anaya, so you said the Planning Commission's planning to present on second reading?
Yes, they will be here.
Would you ask them? They would probably do it anyway, but just in, just to resolve the questions, would you ask them to make sure that they specify the parts of the comp plan that they, I think they usually...
Some of the policies, yes.
Yeah, they, they probably would have anyway.
I think they usually do.
They do.
Go over at least one or two, yeah.
Yeah, but because the question came up, if we could just make sure that they do that, or ask, ask them to make sure.
You want...
Thank you. And I do have a, a second question for, I don't know, the owner's representative, I don't know who wants to respond to this. And can we put the slide back up that showed option A and option B? There we go.
They already have it up?
I don't know who wants to answer this, but, and I know we're not at site plan yet. You wanna see what it is, yeah, I don't blame you. So I know we're not at, we're nowhere near the site plan review, and I know that, that's further down the process, I understand that. But I, I just want to know if you have any sense for whether you've had any discussions about... I'm, I'm very concerned about the remainder of that dead-end road after the entrance to this complex, because I, there's no legitimate reason for that road to even exist. Once you build this out, once you get past the entrance to this, nothing good can come from that, the rest of that dead-end road. And I'm just wondering, now, I know it's not your road, it's a county road.
It's an FDOT road, I'm sorry to interrupt.
It is an FDOT road?
It's an FDOT road.
Okay, so would you be willing to work with FDOT, with our support, to, to get FDOT? I don't care if they abandon the ownership of the road, I just wanted to block it off.
It will, it will, the road will actually just dead right into our driveway, so...
It, it will already be a dead-end road?
Yes, sir.
It won't extend where it does now?
FDOT will probably require a turnaround, so if anybody goes down there and does not live in the apartment complex, they have a way of getting out. But the road will terminate right at our driveway.
Okay, well, a turnaround right there wouldn't be bad, but a turnaround, you know, four-hundred yards down, around the corner...
It'll be all the way at the end, the turnaround.
Yeah, but that's my point, is nothing good is going to come from that dead-end being...
Well, it would be incorporated. You have to be able to turn around at the end of a public right-of-way. So that's an FDOT thing.
No, but will the turnaround be just past your entrance? Or will it be way down at the dead-end where the road goes now?
Our entrance is at the end of the road.
Mr. Mayor?
No.
If I could ask, Ms. Anaya, could you put the slide back up with the two concepts?
Yeah, maybe we'll be a little help.
It's misleading the slide, but if you look at it a little bit closely, what looks like the road is actually not the road.
Right.
Right.
The road ends at the driveway, at the entrance to their property. It's that, that what you're seeing is prob, I don't know if that's the off-ramp or something else that showing up looks like the road, but that's not the actual road?
It's property line.
It's an interstate.
We keep losing the, there we go. Okay, so what I'm looking at is the road is not the road. It's, okay.
Yeah, the road goes right up to the driveway.
All right. Well, I'm sorry, I withdraw my question.
I was confused.
No wonder you're looking at me like I'm... I really am stupid, right?
Hard to read those plans sometimes.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you. That resolves my dilemma, so. And are there other questions? Okay. If there are no other questions, I will close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Map for Five Parcels of Land Located South of East Fowler Avenue and East of Interstate Seventy-Five, Addressed as One-zero-eight-five-one Rollerson Ranch Road and Totalling Twenty Point One Plus Minus Acres Line Within the City of Temple Terrace, Legally Described in Exhibit A Attached Here To By Changing the Future Land Use Designation On Said Property From Public Semi-public To Residential Eighteen For CPA Twenty-four-Dash-Zero-Two, Providing For Amendment To The Official Future Land Use Map Of The City, Providing For Severability, Providing For Correction Of Typical Artificial Errors, Repealing All Ordinances Or Parts Of Ordinances In Conflict Here With, And Providing For An Effective Date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If the ordinance is acceptable, is there a motion?
I got it. Move to approve first reading of an ordinance adopting a comprehensive plan, future land use map amendment for One-zero-eight-five-one Rollerson Ranch Road, and to schedule second hearing on March eighteenth.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion of the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays, resolution is, ordinance is adopted on first reading and will appear for second reading in public hearing on Tuesday, March eighteenth. Thank you very much, sorry for the stupid question. Okay, council, is there any carryover council business from previous meetings? Okay, I have a couple of you who have items for new business. The first one that asked me was Councilmember Chambers.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a report on the cooperative between the Temple Terrace Arts Council and the City of Temple Terrace to provide an art gallery in the hallway here of City Hall. You know, we, we started it last, the end of last year with volunteer paintings from members of the Art Council to get it set up, see how to work it. And as of Friday, we have our first show put in there. And it's, it's in the hallway. And her name was mentioned tonight. The artist is Amina Khan, and you heard that name earlier. And she's the artist who will have her work up this March and April. Ms. Khan is an art and educator. She graduated from the University of Florida with her PhD in engineering. After working as a consultant and research scientist in Gainesville, Ms. Khan moved to Tampa and shifted her focus to using art as a catalyst to ignite meaningful conversations and create connections and build stronger communities. Ms. Khan is currently teaching art at the Universal Academy of Florida, and has just completed her fifth public mural in Temple Terrace, the one mentioned on, at the Lightfoot Center on Fifty-Sixth Street. So you can look for more information about Ms. Khan and her display through all the media channels soon as our media department gets some more information. So it's a great exhibit, it's in the hallway. Look at it on the way out.
I did not know Ms. Khan was an engineer by trade.
PhD in engineering.
I did not know that.
Yeah.
That's quite, that's a versatile person, they can, PhD in engineering and both sides of the brain are working there, yeah.
I got a question, is she doing all five murals?
No, 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 that was, that was not a mistake. That was, no, she's doing one of the five. But she's done ones on the wall, one of the walls on Fifty-Sixth Street, and she's done one at Greco Middle School, and she's done the artwork on Inverness.
I didn't know she was doing the clear, she was coordinating it or...
No, no, she's just doing her one, yes.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Fernandez.
So I would like to report on the Hillsborough County Arts Council, which previously Councilmember Chambers served on, and now I'm the representative for Temple Terrace. And for those of you who, who don't know, that is an advisory board to Hillsborough County County Commissioners, and that board is able to recommend, well, promote grants and recommend grant awards to the county commissioners who then vote to approve them. But there are three grants that the Arts Council can provide, and that is, one is the Cultural Development Grant, and that was just awarded or recommended for award this morning. And the next grant cycle is the Community Arts Grant, and that cycle opens March tenth. So if there are organizations or events that would like to see if they qualify to apply for these grants, you would want to go on the Hillsborough County website. And those grants will actually be awarded in June, or the board will, will score the grants and make recommendations to the board, and then county commissioners will vote on it, and that will be in June. And then the third grant is Professional Development for Arts Grant, and that cycle, application cycle, will open July seventh. So I, I highly recommend that if you are an organization or you have an event that you think might benefit from these grants, and you want to know if you could, if you qualify, to go on the Hillsborough County website and look at the criteria and the application. And that Professional Development for Arts Grant, which the cycle opens July seventh, the recommendation for award will actually be, I think, in September. So, but the deadlines and all of the criteria for application will be on Hillsborough County's website. But I just want to encourage people to take advantage of these grant opportunities.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Kravitz, do you believe you had some things?
I do have two small things. First of all, I had a suggestion. We're gonna have this downtown workshop shortly, I think. What, what does everyone think about having it actually at downtown? Where we can walk around and observe it?
That is difficult to do. We can, we can do, we can talk about doing a field trip, but a meeting is difficult because of the record, the public record and the audiovisual, the ability to stream the meeting. But we, we can schedule perhaps at that meeting if the council wants to do a, a field trip. We can publicly notice that, we've done that before. We, we can do that.
Okay, so I'll bring it up at that meeting, thank you.
Yep.
Second one is regarding the comprehensive plan. I've, I've looked at it. I think if we took it seriously, a lot of us might not like where it wants us to go, especially considering that today we just approved three-hundred-something units of housing, and seven-thousand-four-hundred units of housing are supposed to be built according to comprehensive plan. We'd have to do what we did today twenty-five more times. We'd have to cover three-quarters of an area equivalent to the golf course, five-hundred acres of land. I don't even know if we can do that. So I'd like to maybe look at the comprehensive plan at some point in the future, because I know that every time we have these proposals come to us, they're declared in conformity with the comprehensive plan. And it's important, I think, that we look at it again, maybe, and see if that's really what we want. I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts on that, but that's, that's my thinking right now.
Well, what you point out, that seven-thousand number is, is in error. We recognized that some time ago, probably before you were here on council. But that number is an error. There seems to be some mystery about how it got in the final draft of the, of the comp plan, but it's not the number that we supplied to the Planning Commission. We recognize that, it's on record. We've had this conversation about that number being wrong. We can't, we could, no way we could achieve that number. And you are correct that using that number as a guiding principle, we could never say no to anything. However, in practice, knowing that that number is inaccurate, we have said no to certain densities on development sites. We've, we've required them to make larger lot sizes. So in practice, we've recognized that that, that's... But you're right, reading the document in front of you, you're absolutely right. That number would say that we could never turn anything down, make the whole city apartments. But that's not our intent. The reason that we haven't undertaken to change that with the Planning Commission is it's very expensive to do that for one sentence, that they know it's a mistake, we know it's a mistake. And that plan is up for revision soon, anyway. And that plan is up for revision soon, anyway. We just talked to the, when would she say?
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's like next year. So, yeah, so that, that, those revisions are coming. That number in particular is a, is just plain wrong. But there's other things, as you correctly point out, in the comp plan that are probably need to be revisited too. So you're right. But that's coming like in a year, and it doesn't seem like it's worth the, you know, that's, that's a big undertaking. It doesn't seem like it would be, but it is.
Exciting, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So I have a question.
Is that the right word, exciting?
No.
When we do, and, because it's been a while since I've reviewed the, I mean, updated and gone through that process, do we do a workshop to go through the comprehensive plan, or is it just something that we do at a council meeting? I mean, obviously, we get the backup documents.
I don't remember. I think I was here the last time, but Ms. and I, I don't know what the, I don't remember. It's been so long. I don't know.
Yeah, I haven't been here since they, they've had a workshop for it. But the Planning Commission does date that next year. They will be updating our comprehensive plan. And if there's anything that the council finds, that we can definitely have them address that. But I, I'm not sure. I can ask the Planning Commission about a workshop if we want to proceed that way.
I'm thinking more like for us to, you know, how we, we will identify items that we would like the Planning Commission to address. Would, do we need to have a workshop?
I think Mr. B., you might have some insights.
So as Ms. and I mentioned earlier, there's going to be a representative of the Planning Commission here at the next meeting. I think it's, we can make, make sure that they come prepared to address that, may talk about how the community, how we did it last time, and suggest maybe some alternatives for you to consider. I know as part of the comprehensive plan, there is, there's a sort of a city council portion of it, but then there's also a community portion of it. And I'm sure they can walk us through that process. And if you have suggestions for things you'd, you'd want them to consider, they can probably take that back and kind of mold the plan according to sort of our desires here.
Yeah, and as, as amendments have come up, that one specific policy is already on their things to address. And over the last couple of years, they already have a little, a little bit of a list to address as well as we go through comprehensive plans and do the analysis. They are aware that some things need to be updated, as well as any data, because the population changes, things like that, our graphs, bar graphs thing, so.
But, Mr. B., can I make a suggestion on that? Instead of doing that at the next meeting when that person's here, because that may not be the same person that we want to talk to about the comp plan amendment. So, or the overall, and I'm not going to be here, so a little self-serving, but I, what I wonder is if, would it be okay with everybody if we, instead of doing that, if we just invited them to come and make a presentation at the presentation portion of the meeting about how that process works? Because I know they do a great deal of community outreach, too, and what our role, you know, when this timetable will start, what's the process. But, and just maybe do a 15-minute presentation instead of us just while they're here, we ask them. Would that be acceptable to?
Yes.
Mr. B., is that all right with you?
Yes, sir. We'll see if we can get it scheduled for April.
Okay, or, you know, whenever we have a light agenda month or whatever. I mean, we have some time, so.
Yep, we can do that.
Okay. Does that sound right?
Yes. I will talk to the staff.
Okay.
Let me question the staff.
And Mr. Kravitz, did you, are you finished? Did you have the floor unless you're done?
Thank you very much for the, for the comment on the comprehensive plan.
You're very welcome. Mr. Sisler.
That was my, my concern was, you know, we don't want them to say, oh, we got to have a plan in here by next month, so we can, just so we know what the timetable is so that we have time to react, put our thoughts together, have a, have our internal workshop, which I think we need to have more of, so that, you know, the council can, can discuss these things, because there's history and so forth that can't, that doesn't necessarily get shared in this type of an environment. And the workshop, I think, would be very helpful for it. So, yeah, you, you answered the question.
Well, we have time on our hands, which is good, because we're rolling, we've got legislative session to deal with right now, and then we're rolling into budget.
Yep.
And then we've got all the centennial celebrations, so.
I just want to make sure we have enough time there to do it, react, to do it safely.
So we have time on our hands, because they're not, this doesn't start till next time. So let's, but this is on our radar and good, good topic for, good. Mr. Sisler.
Okay, we had a workshop prior to this meeting with the Temple Terrace Coffee Country Club to discuss current financial issues and, and come up with payment dates and so forth. One of the comments, or one of the, the outs, the outshot of this is that we're going to work through, and correct me if I'm wrong, through the existing documents and make sure that all the changes that have been made through the years are properly codified and functional and can be attained. One of the ones that I wanted to discuss and bring it, and was recommended to bring to council, was the current status, if you will, of the SAC, the Strategic Advisory Committee, of which I'm the council's liaison to with two citizens who volunteer to be on that committee, just with issues that have come up over the last couple of years with people talking to people, and it became something of, of an irrelevant committee. So what I wanted to recommend.
Sorry to interrupt, but maybe it might benefit everybody if you explained a little bit about what the SAC is and what the genesis of that was.
Okay.
I don't think everybody knows that.
Okay. The SAC goes back to the integrity timeframe. We're talking 2015, 2016, in that, in that area, maybe even a little bit later. And with the, with the indebtedness by the club to the city, one of the provisions was that the SAC committee would be created, and they would meet on a quarterly basis. It had, like I said, one member council, two citizen volunteers appointed, and then the president and the general manager for the club. And they would meet on a, on a quarterly basis to review what's going on and if there are any issues that were going back and forth between the club and the city. COVID, everything else just created its own set of problems, and some concessions were made to the club in order to get everybody through those timeframes. And as time went on, the, the club fell further, further behind. They've great, made great strides to getting caught up. But that's, that's the genesis of the SAC, and it just became, it's just, I think it's outlived its usefulness in this particular case. But what I'd like to do is to replace it, and just for consideration by council, with a, an appointed position that would allow that person, not, not a council member, to sit on their finance committee, so that we would have a, it would probably be, they're not, it's a non-voting position on, on them, on their, it's appointed. But we would have a seat at the table. We would perhaps get our financials in a more timely basis. They've done great things with their, with their financials. They're cleaned up. They look pretty good. But it would, it would allow us as a city, as the, as the landlord and the mortgage holder, the insight as to what's going on, if there's any issues and so forth. Just something for the, for council to think about. If they do that, they have to make a significant bylaw change, which has to happen in the month of April during their annual meeting. Otherwise, we'd have to wait another year before we could, could make that happen. So I would just like to recommend that we just, just ban the SAC and re, and, and appoint through our normal citizen appointing process, appoint somebody to sit on their finance committee, assuming that their board will accept that in lieu of that, so that we have a, a presence within the operations or within the, the finance committee. I think I've said that. I must have missed anything.
I know we're in discussion, but there's no motion. Can we keep discussing?
We can.
Okay.
I think it's beneficial in this circumstance.
I can support wholly the, the idea of disbanding the SAC committee. It is now past its usefulness, as you said, they were very good at the time. But on their, seat on the committee, and I'm all for that, but I think it should be someone from our finance department that works for the city, that knows finance and knows what they should be paying and how it's paid and all that, instead of a, instead of a citizen appointee.
Do we have any issues with that, Ms. Shoshun, as a city employee?
No, I don't, I don't see any issue with that. And also, to address a concern that was raised earlier, there's no requirement that this person ask any questions at all. So, but if they do, I, I don't see that that gives us any type of liability, because we are, we're still operating under numerous agreements with them. So that's always what is going to control here.
I don't disagree with that, with your.
And, and with that, that we ask the board to include that in their bylaw and that it be a non-voting, I mean, I don't know how they run their meetings, if it's, if they vote, but it would be a, just to observe, you know? So that's my thoughts on it.
Jim's got numerous idle evenings. He could do that.
Well, I guess I want to kind of hear what the, Mr. B. thinks about that idea of city staff before we go jumping into something.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, so the, I don't, I don't think there's necessarily anything wrong with city staff. I think if any, definitely don't make me the person. I don't, I don't want to be appointed, because you'd be not well-served by that. I think it needs to be somebody with that financial acumen to ask those pressing questions. So I think they wouldn't have to have the ability. I hear possibly making them observe only, but they'd have to have the ability to ask questions, because I think that'd be sort of the purpose to the, to the position, so that they could report back if they had doubts about certain things and just ask for some clarifying, you know, interpretation. But yeah, if that's the direction of council, we can, we can make that work, as long as we understand the role and we have some flexibility.
Okay, back to, but, so what I meant was, I don't know how the finance committee of the club works if they vote on things. So I would think if there's a voting thing, they don't, but they can certainly interact and ask questions and answer questions.
Correct. So if I, this would be similar to like an ex officio member on, on boards. Typically, that'd be somebody who, they couldn't vote, but the, yes, they could have discussion.
So the question, would, would that, somebody like that be beneficial?
Other councilmen?
Well, I, I have concerns about it, and I understand that we do have, we, we have secured debt, and the country club owes the city in repayment of that debt. So I, I do understand that we have some sort of oversight, but I guess I look at this as, I'm just concerned about, to me, it seems like overreach. And so if we have a, an appointed city representative on their finance committee and we, and they're paying us, and, and everything is going fine, but we see that they're making some management missteps. You know, where, where do we, and then they, they're going to come back to the city and say, well, you know, they, they've made some bad financial choices. And maybe those financial choices won't even have an impact on what the club pays the city, but they're going to come back and report, well, these aren't very good management financial decisions. And then we, as a council, then, do we have some sort of obligation to, to weigh in? I mean, it, for, yes, we are the landlord, but they are a private entity, and I, I, I look at it as the same way as maybe a, an apartment complex that has received some sort of loan guarantee, and the state doesn't come in and, and sit on their management boards and tell them that they're not managing correctly. So I, I just have concerns along those lines. I, I would, my preference would be that we require a country club report every month with the opportunity, or maybe not, maybe we don't need it every month, but every quarter, where the country club representative comes here, stands in front of us, and then we can ask the questions that need to be asked. But I just have a concern about putting any kind of city representative on the board of essentially a private entity.
We have that now. That's part of the latest agreement, is they're supposed to appear quarterly, and they don't, how do you enforce that?
Well, let's, that's really, go on to that if we want to have that discussion.
Right.
Mr. Shoshun.
So, back in October of 2017, there was a forbearance agreement that was presented to council, basically from the club, to forestall council from taking action against them. And out of that came the golf course reorganization plan at the same time. One of the items on that was that the city shall be made aware of and invited to any and all director and/or committee meetings. So we essentially could be attending any of their director meetings and any of their committee meetings already. And as I had said earlier, a lot of what you were talking about is already here. We just haven't been exercising it. So I don't think, and, and the SAC was essentially having three people doing what we're asking one person to do now. So I think SAC, when it start, when it was first came about, was supposed to be going to all of their directors' meetings. But, you know, as you said, the pandemic, the pandemic came not too long after that, and, and things made it more difficult, and it didn't happen. But you're just asking one person now to do what three people could have and were doing, so.
Well, if, if I may.
Well, I'm going to get to Mr. Kravitz, too, so go ahead.
You go ahead. To your point, to your, to that point, logistically, it's easier to get one person to a meeting than it is to get five, because you also had the general manager and the president of the, of the club. So you were trying to coordinate between five people, and, and it became difficult to, to, to make that happen with people's schedules, working schedules. But the other issue is that their board meeting is going on right now. Okay? So I could never attend any of it. There was the first Tuesday of every month is their board meeting, and I, you're right, we could go to the finance committee meetings, could never find out when they were. That's, that's improved through the years. But in the beginning, it was very difficult to do that, because you never knew when, when it was or when it was going on, so.
Councilmember Kravitz, any thoughts? You go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to still support disbanding the SAC committee. You know, maybe we need to take both these two separate. But anyway, back to the other one. Since it looks like we have the ability to put somebody in these different meetings by agreement in 2017, do we need to do anything other than remind the club that?
That's kind of where my thoughts are, not to cut you off.
No, but to remind the club that that's in there. I don't know why they need a bylaw change. They agreed to it, so.
So why don't we, instead of taking, I mean, we, if we want to disband the SAC, we can do that any, to any Tuesday night that we meet. I mean, we don't have to do that right now. I don't know if that's a bad idea, but I'm just saying, we don't have to rush into that. We can do that anytime. Mr. B., what would be your thoughts of, I didn't know that was in there. I probably knew at some point, but I didn't remember. What, couldn't we accomplish the same thing simply by calling Mr. Schaefer tomorrow and saying, hey, look, we found the, scan it, email it to him, so he can see it, because he probably hasn't seen it since then either, if ever. And say, instead of this whole bylaw change and us appointing somebody, we just want to exercise this that's already in our agreement and come to your finance committee meetings, maybe every time, maybe not every time, you know, but we want to send somebody not to vote or, but to, but to just be there and observe and maybe ask a few questions if they come up. I think it's a great idea that maybe it'd be somebody from finance. And they may not even need to go every time, depending on, you know, they go to three of them in a row, and there's nothing to talk about, they, they, you know, they just pop in quarterly or whatever at some point. But I don't know that we even need them to do a bylaw change and us to do a, I think it sounds like it's already in place.
Given what, what Ms. Shoshun said, I, I've read every one of his documents numerous times through the years, and I didn't, I did not realize, I did not remember that clause, so.
Well, that, that brings us back to the whole idea of cleaning this mess up.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, I mean, we're certainly willing to go through everything and try to come up with a more searchable way to find these things, because it, it's all on, as far as I know, most of it's on paper in these notebooks. So if we can even scan some of these and maybe, and we'll condense some of the key elements, but if we can scan some of these, put them into some form on the computer that you could, if you just wanted to look at maintenance, all you'd have to do is click on maintenance, and there would be the maintenance stuff with the main things I can pull out and put at the top for the tunnels and the trees. I mean, here, I, I recognize these tabs I put in probably five years ago that say trees, tunnels, because I've looked them up so many times and was trying to make it easier for people to, to find those, too.
I, personally, I don't want to do that. I mean, you have two huge binders in front of you. They probably don't even have that.
Oh, I'm sure they don't.
That's only half of it, because I've got.
Yeah, and that's not even the whole thing. I don't want a search engine. I want to clean it up. I want, I want something that is in this.
I don't know how you can cond, I mean, one, one loan agreement is as big as that. So I, I can only pull out the key elements.
Appendices. I mean, loan agreements can be an appendices.
So, just to talk to the agreement, I know that the city attorney has obviously some well-founded reservations about trying to synthesize this down, but as a matter of just pure practice, what we have today is completely inworkable.
Yes.
It gives staff absolutely zero guidance as to what's going on. The clause that she read, I've referenced before, and I was told, no, that's not the case. And so like, nobody knows what's happening. Nobody knows what is accurate anymore. I wouldn't, I could reach out to Mr. Schaefer tomorrow and say that. I don't know if he's going to come back with, hey, here's something from 2019 that says something different, so, but I think it's a fair enough observation. I'm sure he would appreciate it more than having to change his bylaws. So I'm happy to do that. I also do think that we need to move towards synthesizing this. And have. towards synthesizing this and having that simple, something simpler than what we have, at least clearer to give us direction as of today, what we understand to be today. If that's what council supports, I'm happy to do that.
I got two comments. Just the, the first one, if we send someone there, I think we need to have a very clear idea of what it is that person is supposed to accomplish, even if it's just to remind them to pay us on time. So I, I know there's a lot of discussion. I'm not exactly sure what that person is going to do other than look. And the other comment is, my personal preference is to novate all of the pre-existing agreements. Just have a clause in the new agreement that says all previous agreements are null and void. We work from a fresh slate and the only thing we really need is the number. What do they owe us? And then we develop from there what we want to have happen in the future. And I'm pretty sure it can be pretty slim. Just my opinion. I mean, I've, I've worked on $80 million shipbuilding agreements. This is a $2 million loan. Those were, you know, 40 pages. So I'm, I'm pretty sure that whatever we have in terms of binders, we can at least reduce that by 80% if we go about it strategically. So that, my, my preference is start from a fresh slate, think about what we need, put that in there, send it to the club, see what they want.
Okay. So what have we decided? We've decided that we're going to call Mr. Schaefer and ask him if we can just send somebody without the necessity to change bylaws and change stuff here. We just want to exercise our right to attend their finance committee meetings.
They may still have to change their bylaws on that. You'd know better than I would.
And that's all up to them.
Yeah, I don't know the bylaws, but that's up to them. You know, we start out with, this is what was agreed to in 2017 and see where it goes from there.
Yeah. If they agreed to it in 2017 and they never changed their bylaws, then shame on them.
Yeah.
They can still do it. So, yeah, and see what they say. Could be, we're making this more complicated than it needs to be.
Could be.
Agreed. Okay. I'll shut up.
Second.
We will.
Sorry. Didn't know I did that.
Any discussions? And we will continue our discussions internally about what the best approach is to consolidating this.
Got to remember it a few years. All the tribal knowledge of this goes away.
Yeah, I just.
That's the scary part.
I think there's got to be some, and I, I understand it's going to be a heavy lift, but I think in the long run it will save us time and grief. And I, but we do have to be realistic about how to accomplish this. I don't know. And that's where we need to talk to our staff about, how, how do we take that and turn it into, and there are some things in there that need to be preserved. We can't just completely, you know, there's some old stuff in there that, that's important too. So.
Keep the good, get rid of the bad.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, okay.
I mean, we have a huge loan agreement that's completely and utterly separate from the lease agreement.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Which we don't.
We don't want to touch the loan agreement.
No, no.
Because then you're going to go back to the bank and everything else.
Okay. Is there anything else on this? Are you satisfied? You brought it up. You're good. You everybody good with this? We're all, okay. City managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask up Utilities Director Tinch to give the council an update on the Fowler Avenue repair to the sanitary sewer. If council recall, several months ago, we had an emergency provision that was activated because of that sanitary sewer that coincided with the hurricane. We have now some new developments regarding that project that Mr. Tinch will fill you in on.
Thank you.
Tinch, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Been a little bit since I've been up here, but wanted to give you a brief update on the Fowler Avenue Gravity Main Emergency Replacement Project. Just a little bit of background to date, we've completed all the design utility coordination, which was a pretty substantial effort. In addition to permitting, we also have excavated on site. We've conducted the pilot bore, which is the initial bore that has to be established to make sure you have the correct line for the final bore, which would be a 48-inch steel casing. So they do this initial bore to make sure you have a nice level and accurate depiction of what that final bore is going to be. So that has been completed. Material's been delivered to the site. The 48-inch casing that I mentioned earlier is onsite as well as all the PVC pipe that we utilize for the new gravity maintenance being put under Fowler Avenue. Next steps include de-watering. They'll continue to de-water the site. They are having to dig down approximately 15 feet depending on some of these manholes. And so they have to go down, de-water the groundwater, pull that out, and then they excavate. They'll continue to expand upon what they call the push pit. So the push pit is located on the north side of Fowler. They'll push to the south to the receiving pit, which will be on the south side of Fowler Avenue. So both those sites have been de-watered. They're finalizing the excavation on the north push pit. The south receiving pit has already been dug down and, and created and de-watered. In addition, they're de-watering for the manhole that would be put in place that will be located on the south side of the road. In addition, they'll, once they get that, the steel casing put in, they will finish that up with the pushing in of the new gravity main. The joints will be restrained because even though this is gravity, at some future point, you'll have to pull that pipe out. It will degrade over time. And so you want that pipe to be, you want continuous piece. So they'll actually, what they call restrained joints. So at some point in the future, we can pull that pipe out to replace it. The good news is you'll have that steel casing in place. So should be a pretty easy lift at that point. The substantial completion date for this project is April 15th. So got about two months out from that point. Cost estimate, I wanted to speak a little bit about that. So the initial cost estimate that I gave you back in November was $1.1 million. The actual cost estimate that we received for this effort is 1.6. So this is a little bit of a different animal in that typically when you're doing an emergency replacement project, you don't find out the cost for the effort until everything is completed. The site is buttoned up, it's been restored. We were able to actually secure a cost estimate from the contractor. It's a lump sum cost estimate. So the, the amount that is anticipated is 1.6. Again, try and keep in mind that back in November, this project was in its infancy, and there were a lot of unknowns still that were out there. So as they started digging in, really getting a good idea of what this was going to cost, getting hard numbers from the contractors, from the drill contractor, this is the number that they came up with. In addition, we are potentially looking at utilizing FEMA dollars for this effort since it did manifest itself during Hurricane Milton. So that's a possibility. We could use that for reimbursement for these funds. Timeline moving forward, just a little bit about the timeline. I know there's, again, been a lot of discussion about where this project is and why, why is it not complete to date. So when you think about our traditional CIP projects, which this would be a pretty substantial CIP effort, you have six to eight months of design work that goes in, design and permitting, pre-hand. Then you have your whole procurement process. Then you fall into your construction phase. That procurement process and the construction phase can run anywhere from 10 to 12, even 14 months. So when you think about us squeezing that all the way down into a six-month window where we've now done all the design, all the permitting, we're initiating construction, construction will be completed, it is a pretty quick effort compared to what it would normally take. I know six months doesn't sound like an emergency replacement, but these projects oftentimes run into snags that are unforeseen. And so things have slowed a bit. We're in the process of sticking or staying on top of the contractor to make sure that they get this project pushed forward as quickly as possible. That said, I'll stand for any questions.
Councilmember's questions. Councilmember Schisler.
I have three quick ones. With the pullout, how long, how long would that last? I mean?
The pipe itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, 50 years.
Okay. So we're, there's nothing, nothing pressing.
Over nine or lifetime. Well, maybe for luck.
Do we have any recourse, and this might be from Ms. Shon, do we have any recourse to the installer of the light pole that created this whole problem? Maybe under liability insurance from way back when?
That was an original theory, but that turned out not to be true.
Yeah.
The light pole.
Oh, that wasn't a cause of, okay. All right. It did cause it then.
Mr. B.
So, so this is what, at the end, when Mr. Tinch was talking about the possibility reimbursement, this has come up recently because in, in talking with the finance department and looking at this and looking at some precedent, perhaps in other, in other cases, the, the light pole collapsed and it collapsed, obviously during the hurricane. I mean, in the heart of the hurricane, the light pole came down. We all assumed the light pole came down because of the hurricane winds or other conditions. And the sanitary sewer obviously collapsed as well. So we were operating under the impression that perhaps it was the sanitary sewer, it was the collapse that led to the light pole coming down. But the, the argument could be made, and our finance department is exploring that, whether the two conditions that coinc, basically at the same time just happened, is happenstance, it just happened to happen at the same time. It could be attributed possibly to the storm precipitating that. So that's, that's a line of thought we're, we're approaching. If FEMA accepts that line of thought, possibly we'll be reimbursed. If they don't, then we, then we won't, which is, we've been operating on the premise that we're going to absorb these costs from our water and sewer fund all along. So this is an avenue that, again, we're looking at, but it, it may not pan out, but we at least want you to understand the reason why we're looking at it.
Last question. What is de-watering in Florida?
So the groundwater table in Florida is, is very close to the surface. In some cases, is that the surface?
Sucking up the whole aqua.
Right. So what they end up doing is they put what they call well points down in a, like a ring or around the entire site that you want to de-water. And they literally hook up suction pumps to those, pull a vacuum, and it pulls, literally pulls the groundwater out of that area that you want to excavate so that the groundwater around it may be two feet below the surface, but the groundwater in the area that you've now put your well points into down to say 15, 20 feet has no water in it. And they have to do that. And it doesn't, it ha, it does take time to de-water a site. That's another issue that has to be addressed is that it, it doesn't happen overnight.
You guys create new words every time. Okay.
Other questions? Councilmembers?
I've got one small one.
Councilmember Kravitz?
The original 1.1 million number, that did not come from a contractor, right?
It was a, a loose estimate from the contractor, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. But again, remembering that it was very early on in the project.
Do we need action?
No. So I, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Mr. Tin, actually, I have several that I won't bore everybody with the details of how exactly this is going to work. I'll get with you offline on that. But it seems to me, and we've discussed this since it happened, that the more we learn about this, that perhaps eye and eye from groundwater intrusion into that pipe upstream of the section that failed, it's fair to say that that may have contributed to this, is it not, that if we had significant eye and eye upstream in the pipe, that that pipe could have filled up more than it's intended to fill up and helped cause some of the crumbling of that? Is that?
That's always a possibility. But what we think may have happened here is there's a lot of sewer gas in that line. And you build up sewer gas and, and gravity mains because it's at a flow rate, it's not at a push that you could in a force main. So over time, the past 50 years, the sewer gas, it's acidic, very acidic, acidic in nature. It actually eats away at that steel casing and that steel pipe. And that's what was the other kind of flaw is that was ductile iron that was put in there. And so after 30, 40, 50 years of just that constant erosion, the pipe just basically became Swiss cheese and collapsed.
Okay. So that's related to my next question, and which is, should we, or have we inspected that pipe upstream of the section that failed to determine if we're just sitting on a time bomb with the, with the upstream part of that failing also?
That, that will be, once we get this new line in place, we will then be able to inspect that remainder of the section that runs parallel to Fowler Avenue because we anticipate that there may be significant issues with that line as well. Now, we've been in contact with the lining contractor. He's looked at some of what we've been able to see so far as far as the actual condition of the pipe, and he believes it can be lined, which would be a significant cost savings to the city and not require, then require little to no construction activity other than bypass pumping and then putting in that new liner building.
And that's related to my next question is, what other pipes up there crossing their fa, I mean, it's unlikely that that pipe was put in there. And it's the only pipe that was put in there 50 years ago. It's probably other pipes. Is it, am I making a leap that that whole system needs to be camered to see if, because it's easier to line them before they fail than it is to, I mean, once it fails, this, this pipe could have been re-lined, could have been re-lined for a fraction of what the 1.6 million dollars had we known about it.
Yes. So again, we'll be looking at condition index for the remainder of the pipes that feed into that collection area. We do have a number of force mains that feed into that area. So they are obviously under pressure. And when you have issues with those, it's a little more abundantly clear that you're having a problem versus gravity lines, which allow for that kind of buildup of gas over time and long-term kind of erosion that you wouldn't necessarily see in a, a force main. So that is something that will be assessed as well. Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tinch.
Welcome.
That's all you have? City attorney? You have nothing. Oh my goodness, guys. What are we going to do? We're out of stuff. Everybody good? Anything else to come before the council? Councilmembers, anything else? If not, we will be adjourned.